All right, 6 o'clock, time for regular village board meeting. Like, everybody stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its midst. Okay, please call the roll. Ravka, Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
All right, in your packets were the minutes from our June 8th regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Parker. Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden. March. Yes. Also in your packets were the accounts payable and payroll. The payroll for the pay period ending 6/13/2020 was $48,508.52. Accounts payable, the general fund was $190,437.55, capital improvement fund, $3,877.20, for total of $194,314.75. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, we'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Parker, second by trustee Ham. Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
March. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
All right, any public comment or questions? Nope. All right, reports of committee, village administrator report.
I don't have anything in your packet, but I could let you know that we did submit the grant for I-57 and 88th Avenue called the Rebuild Illinois Competitive Public Infrastructure Grant. We sent that out Friday overnight, it was June 30th. So we would be applying for $3.2 million for improvements to I-57 and 88th Avenue for development purposes. And it's very competitive, we will keep you posted whether we get that or we don't get that.
Yeah, I just want to compliment Amy and the staff and the engineers for putting it all together, it was a big, big project. And, you know, it's kind of a, you know, high reward but high risk. You know, there's a lot of people applying for these, but if you don't apply, you're never going to get them. So, you know, just compliment you guys on getting that together. And one question, last report, you mentioned that 207 Hickory, did that ever, wasn't there supposed to be some judgment the day after, you know, the day after our last report?
It went back, we had a Zoom hearing with the judge and he, the property owner did retain an attorney and attorney showed up to the hearing on his behalf and they gave the property owner another 21 days to try and finish the property. So we'll go back probably for another status in 21 days.
Okay. Any other questions for the village administrator? All right, police chief report.
Public Works report. We had the Public Works Committee.
Oh, wait, Mike, let Bob talk first and then we'll have our Public Works Committee.
Unless you want to go for me. Just a couple of updates, the water main project on Corning has started. You may have seen the equipment out there. I didn't have it written reported in your packets, I was on vacation last week. So, a couple of things, just continued day-to-day operations. Couple of things I talked over with the Public Works Committee, I know Michael talked about. Couple of things I'm going to work on. Do you want to talk about it, Mike, or I can talk about it?
Did you ever get a quote for the?
I had one gentleman out, Dr. March, doesn't want to touch it, being that it's 100 years old. The other gentleman out is talking with some other people in his crew to see what we can do there, possibly. The other thing I'm working on is we're going to try to do a stormwater study for the village. And what it is, is it's going to kind of study what we have now, what improvements we can make, and then how it'll affect where our system will be, the effects of development down the road, how this system is now, what are we going to have to add moving forward? Because the creeks around the area will be draining too. Legally can't get any bigger. So, that's the discussion that discussed at the committee. That's my report.
What about the building? I heard you got, Will County gave you a response to the landscaping plan revisions and we?
We're going to do a little bit more of the revisions. We're getting there. So, we'll see what happens.
One other thing I think maybe you could mention is about the variance that you granted to the Kerry, Mr. Kerry.
Mr. Kerry, Kerry Glenn. Due to the parkway, the narrowness of the parkway, I granted him a variance. We won't allow him to have to put parkway trees in there because it's just not going to work there.
So this is just you guys required staff to let you know if we ever granted a variance for landscaping in the subdivision ordinance? You allowed us to change that provision, but with the stipulation that we inform you if one was ever given? And so we did grant that, and so we just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. I did recommend him with some of the recommendations.
So the water main project?
Yes.
So I noticed they kind of just started, are they just doing the west side of town first, or how are they?
I think what they're doing now is they're doing a little bit of like exploratory updates. Kind of giving them an idea of where to go with it. I mean, I know they have plans, but sometimes plans don't show up. So, that's what I believe what they're doing.
So they didn't actually put a new main there where they dug? They're just kind of exploring, okay, got it. And, is Aqua on the line?
I don't think they are yet.
No, okay. All right.
No.
All right, anybody have questions for Bob? No, okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Marcy Treasures report.
You have a copy of the Treasures report in your packet. If you have any questions on here. Otherwise, I did want to comment, the general fund under the expenditures line item, just wanted you to note that $90,000 of that will be reimbursed to back to us. That is, $90,000 of it is part of the grant for the sidewalks, the ADA sidewalks. It's a grant where we have to pay it out first and then they reimburse us. So, it's the construction of what was done on the corners already and then portion of it was some of the engineering. So, we filed the monthly paperwork with them the other day. They'll approve it sometime this week. Then we should see a check rather quickly from the state. $90,000 of that expense will go away.
Thank you. Engineers report. Troy could not make it, but he sent a report for Amy to read.
So, he did mention the Corning project and his report mentions that Renn Construction is the construction company that has started the work on Corning Avenue for the water main replacement. That's the extent of his information to us on that at this point. And hopefully if Aqua gets on here soon, they'll give us some more. And then, he talks about the couple, the resolution that you'll have in your packet on West Street. It is to allow the MFT funds to be used for engineering and construction for local matches for West Street resurfacing from Corning to Joliet. This project is federally funded at 80% for construction and construction engineering in 2021. The MFT agreement, which you also have in your packet, is for West Street resurfacing in order to use the MFT funds for Phase 1 in design engineering. And IDOT requires this MFT engineering agreement. That's just how they work. You've seen these before, I'm sure.
All right. Any questions on the engineering, or any questions we ought to pass on to the engineer? All right, reported the Administrative Oversight Committee.
Yep, we had a meeting recently. Couple of highlights where we had a discussion about the liquor licenses, if we should waive some of the fees or push them out or revise the schedule. Kind of talked through that whole thing, we decided we just want to leave the fees how they are. Marcy did presentation on the revenue, projected revenue reductions. Essentially since the car dealerships and the restaurants have all been closed, there's going to be a significant hit to our revenues. Great house construction for the year. We had a good conversation about that. The chief brought up some issues with the recently implemented personnel manual, changes that he had some questions on. Marcy did some research on that and I think what we've determined is we were not working with the latest copy of that manual or the manual we were working with. And updated some stuff that has been implemented since 12 years ago. So, we're in the process of, I'm assuming, we really, really updated. To release a couple of books. And finally, as part of the production revenues discussion, we had a good, I think, maybe a spirited discussion regarding the need to watch discretionary spending and overtime on the administrative staff. And I think everybody kind of understands the seriousness of the issue and we're going to watch the spending very closely.
Okay, so question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The manuals. Are they stored accountably, or the manuals stored?
Marcy, you want to take that one?
So if there's a question, something that's changed, ask me here or ask. So, Pat, about the liquor licenses. Was it specifically the gambling casino, you know, FA or?
Yeah, that was the one we started with, which was the family or the person that owns that establishment has not opened this year because he hasn't been open and wasn't sure if he was going to open it. And really on that one, we put together a pretty good study of the competing villages and how many licenses are available for different villages and where our fees are. And really what we kind of boiled it down to is we've only agreed to issue one license for the entire village. And so therefore that license is probably pretty valuable. And so that was kind of the reason why we've decided to at least not make any changes at this point. Now, the current owner of that establishment has owned it for a few years and this is the first time we've heard some issues. And I think, you know, we'll kind of sit tight and see what happens. And, but we, the committee felt that that license is very valuable, which is why we did, we decided not to change it at this time.
Okay, any other questions? All right, police committee report.
We had our meeting and decided that we would hold subsequent meetings every two months or so. The next meeting is going to be August 4th at 6:15, tentatively. During our meeting, we had talked to the chief quite a bit about statistics and things going forward. He said that he would be able to contact the 9/11 center and possibly get a crime map for the village of Peatone. He was going to work on that and see if that was available. If it was, then we would talk about it at the next meeting. Additionally, he was going to produce a monthly statistic report that the committee could look into, review, and see if there was anything in that report that would be necessary or if we should present any portion of that to the village board meeting. So, we'll talk more about it at the next meeting.
Aqua was just going to call my cell phone in a second.
All right, Public Works Committee, Mike.
Well, I've covered most of it. Still with the new building, the landscaping, and we're getting one more bit on insulating. We talked about the water problem at the end of Second Street. And something I noticed odd the other day, we had an inch and a half of rain and there was no water flowing down there. Did you see any?
I don't think I went down there after that rain, yeah.
It seemed odd to me. Anyway, the thought process is that there may be treatments in there and we're going to see about robbing that out. Hopefully that will relieve some of that pressure and keep the water out of those crawl spaces. That's about the main trucks of it.
Is that it? All right. I think she's got Aqua on the line here, if anybody. Are they on the line?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, any questions for the lady from Aqua? Or do you have any updates to give us at all?
Sure, I can provide you some updates on the projects we've got going. And then you can ask any questions you've got.
Perfect.
That's okay?
Yeah, perfect.
I'll start with the Peatone interconnect water main project. You know, that one's the, we've got the two sections on that, the rural section and the urban. We still have restoration and the interconnects to install on the rural section. Those will be done once, well, restoration is in the process now, but the interconnects won't be connected until we get approval from EPA to move forward. The urban section, which will be the final phase to basically get everyone into Peatone water. We, again, are waiting on EPA to give us the go-ahead on that. So, I don't really have an update as far as a timeline to provide on that. The chemical loop study, we're still running both Peatone and Pankakee water. We wanted to collect some more data on the Peatone water before we made the switch within that trailer to study just Pankakee water. Maybe sometime in this next month we'll get the switch or we'll get to testing everything within Pankakee. The Howard lift station project, we've got the valve vault and the lead well set. The majority of the piping has been in place and installed. Pumps are set. We have electrical work remaining. We've got to set the lids and we've got restoration there. I would expect that that's going to wrap up within probably the next month. Really, we're kind of just at the mercy of our electrical contractor. The sooner that he can get there, the better. You know, I would anticipate about a month to finalize that. And the final project that we've got going is the Corning Avenue. We have awarded that to Renn Construction and they actually started installing main today. I believe they started a block west of the railroad and they're headed west towards Rafferty. They have one crew right now, but they do plan to add a second crew. Looks like they may be working 10-hour days with an occasional Saturday. And we've got the completion date set for that, September the 1st. And I believe that should work out well with what you guys have planned for your paving project. That's the updates that I've got.
Okay, any questions for her? All right, I don't think so, no questions. So appreciate you calling in and feel free to come to our next meeting, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, add to old business, there is none. New business, Peatone Car Club, review of previously approved event in light of new public gathering guidelines. So is anybody here from the car club?
Well, the last time I was here was January, I believe. Yeah, pre-pandemic. I've been to about six events so far this year that's already taking place. Mantino, Manhattan, moving forward with their approved lights. They plan normally during summer. We've been putting together a plan to do this. I mean, we've cut back a lot of stuff we used to do because we just can't do it. Looking at parking cars, a little farther apart, using the same streets that we use. Like, where we used to get our hoodie bags and stuff like that in door prices, we're not going to do that because it just brings everybody up to a certain area. We're staying away from that. The more events we go to, the more stuff that we see other communities are doing. So it's actually a learning process. We're constantly changing what we're planning on doing to make it better and easier on everybody. Last year we had a cleanup contest, not doing that. We're looking at a couple of times that significantly, significantly. You know, only doing a four-hour thing. But at times, for Game On, the benefit of the ice cream shop, this is how we like to go from 11 to 4 type of thing. You always keep everything wrapped up.
So it's still going to be July 25th?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, do you want to come in and give us like an update? You know, before that?
I can call, you know, hold the chief and just keep them posted.
Yeah, if there's any changes or anything, because we'll have a couple meetings.
I mean, we're going to get our four tires and anti-sanitation downtown. We want to do something, though, we just can't do what we normally do.
Sure.
The sponsorships, obviously, the business needs most. We're not getting that money that we normally can to help us out. Like I say, we were going to probably, we were talking about doing awards, but they wouldn't be like class awards. We drive around, I love our, you know, custom pack, Latin Bean job or something like that, it'd be homemade, metal appropriate. Once again, to keep us from buying stuff, keep expenses down. And if we do classes, it takes a lot longer because we have to send people out to look at the cars and really do a thorough judging on them. Or this could be just more of a walk-up, take a good look at it, hey, okay, this will fit that award.
Okay. Yeah, anybody have any questions about it?
You know your hours, yeah. We were looking at going from 11 to 4, but I think we're going to block the streets off earlier again to keep people from getting in there and clogging the streets up. And when we bring them in, we're going to bring them in on Main Street here, just one entrance coming in. So we can, we're going to hand out a dash guard with COVID rules on the back, the state rules. And once again, this thing could change again two or three weeks, we don't know. That's another reason why we're not getting way out on the line on this thing.
You talked about originally when Todd and I spoke, you talked about a, that for crews. Are you still planning that?
No. I was, I was, well, if I lock the streets off, I gotta start moving barricades there.
Well, that's not too hard to do. But we don't say, put it off the concrete.
I mean, we could possibly throw it in.
What do you think about it?
We could make a route. I mean, that way people could also stay at their residences if they don't want to.
Yeah, I think that would be nice.
Maybe throw it in the plant?
Because I've seen they've done that in Mantino.
I mean, we used to do it and then we had a lot of problems with people watching too much TV and they were out doing barbecues and stuff.
Explain though, what Mantino was like.
Oh, we did the Mantino parade.
Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago.
It's a lot.
It was long.
Well, and it's, he's bringing, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
It's a lot more involvement because they had Public Works and they had police.
Police, they were blocking everything.
Yeah, so it would be all hands on deck. And we only have a total of about six members.
Yeah.
So, it would take a whole lot more community involvement to do the parade through town because you would need all of those intersections blocked off.
I mean, we did have, we did have a past cruise route that we used to do that went down.
Simple one, but we probably couldn't do the parade one year.
Yeah, we don't need to hit every street.
No.
I mean, it was long. We were in the power for probably about an hour driving around.
Well, think about it and talk to chief and maybe we could work something out.
Yeah, it was like about a mile-long parade route. Like, the whole coming works great for the walkers, so I don't know how creepy those cars are, but we can make a route out. What we used to do was, we used to go out Second Street, down Crawford to Conrad, out past the middle, back around the high school, and then back up West Street and then come back in on Main Street. That's what we used to do in the past.
All right, well, why don't you guys, you know, come up something and talk to chief and?
West Street, yeah, we'll make it work. Yeah, because I mean, people, I mean, that'd be a good idea. That way people wouldn't have to, if you come uptown if they didn't want to.
All right, so we need, do we need to take any action on this at all? Or we already approved it, right?
We approved it, so if you just want to modify your approval administratively, we could.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll work with it, so.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be a good idea because I, we didn't know where we were going to be at with the phases.
Yeah.
I thought it was a good idea if we moved into another one and come up and talk about it.
All right, very good.
All right.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, temporary outdoor seating permit extension. So, there was a few businesses that took advantage of the outdoor seating that we allowed during the Phase 3. Now it's Phase 4, so we, Amy sent out a letter to those people that were doing outside seating saying that, you know, we'll extend it till tonight. So, we wanted the board to kind of give their input on it and the chief to give his input. From what I understand, chief, did Suzie's close? They're done, right? So that's good, that's kind of what we wanted anyway, so that's good. So that leaves us with just the little, the extension that we gave to Game On and then the outdoor seating at the Ice Cream Parlor. And I believe that was it, right? Oh, the American Legion, you guys are doing something now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, what do you guys think? Continue allowing it? As long as there's no problems? Just want everybody to know that, you know, this is a privilege. It's not a right of those businesses to do this. So if we have problems, it's, you know, we, it's in our power to shut that down. But we do want to encourage business. So, we'll work with you as much as we can. Jim, did you, you guys submitted?
Yeah, I brought in all the paperwork coming up Friday.
Okay, so we're good, chief?
Thanks for helping out with that, too.
Okay, good. Any other questions about that at all?
With the ice cream and the better, or the business development district, is there any money for like a tent rental to help them? Because that one's really into sunlight. Like a hot place to enjoy some ice cream?
Yeah.
Is that doable?
I don't think you can spend that money on stuff like that. I mean, not just like a temporary.
Right, usually those improvements seem to be permanent.
Okay. Yeah.
They are open up inside now.
Yeah, and I asked him. Yeah, and I asked him specifically if they wanted to continue, because I thought the same thing, it's so hot out there. But he says people, a lot of people take advantage of it, so... All right.
Are you going to set a continuation date?
Oh, yes, good, I'm glad you brought that up, yeah. So I was thinking that maybe we should just set a date like November 1st to say, so that way it just doesn't go on indefinitely. Because we don't know when we're going to get out of Phase 4 or, you know... So I would say we should say till November 1st or until we hit Phase 5. Which, what, well, I don't even know if we have to say that. Let's just say till November 1st, and then if we're still in this goofiness next spring, we can always, we can always start over, yeah. Yeah, chief?
I believe November 1st is also the penalty for the flash open license, and then the outside for the...
Oh, okay.
I can double-check that.
Oh, I didn't realize we had a date on that.
Yeah, we have a date, I can't be over here around.
Oh, okay.
I can't recall it, I believe it's somewhere between those.
I'd have to look that one up.
Yeah, I believe it is.
Well, let's make it whatever that date is. So the reason, yeah. So it's the same. So there's no confusion.
I'll take a second, look it up.
Okay.
But you set the date now, confirm it.
Okay. So how about a motion then to extend the temporary outdoor seating on a case-by-case basis, allow it until November 1st or whatever date comes up with this. Moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Parker.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jones? Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, item C, appointment of village president pro temp. I'd asked trustee Ham to do this a while ago, but we never really formally took action on this. So I would like a motion to approve trustee Ham as the village president pro temp. Oh, I'm sorry. I fell asleep there for a second. Moved trustee Bowden, second trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Ham?
Yes.
All right, item D, discussion item regarding petition, well, you got a date?
That's a date.
November 3rd, okay. So item D is discussion regarding International Union of Operating Engineers Local 399 AFL-CIO for all full-time and regular part-time record clerks, administrative assistants, treasurers, and managers of streets and alleys working for the Village of Peatone. So Amy, go ahead, you want to give us a little update?
Sure, so I've received this in the mail last week. You have the petition in your packet. So it's a petition to organize for four employees of the Village of Peatone. And there are certain criteria that we have to meet, but it's just pretty much a done deal. And I will defer to Jim for some of the technicalities.
Sure, this is a majority interest petition, which means that if they are showing that more than 50% of the positions named have signed the union card, then they can be certified to represent those people without an election. I did file an appearance on Friday noting that we would file our response to the petition on time. It's due on, just check that, it's actually due on the 11th, but that'll make it the 13th. And I'll discuss that with Amy somewhat further. There's just one or two possible questions with, with the petition. You can see the names of the positions. And as you might guess, there's at least one position which is questionable in terms of managerial or supervisor, which needs to be brought up.
That was my question.
Yes, that, that will be essentially our, you know, will be a response. We can respond to it, you know, in a number of different ways, but in all reality, I mean, there isn't too much to say other than that point. And we will make that point, and then I'll discuss a little more with Amy, too. And then we'll file our response. Now, at that point, what happens is the investigator, labor board official who's in charge of this, will look at the response and will look at the petition. And if they feel that they need to have quote-unquote "a hearing" on any issue raised, then they'll set a hearing date. And at that point, we have to appear. It's at the State of Illinois Building downtown, 160 Los Algeles Street. And they conduct hearings to work out any disagreements on the appropriateness of the unit or the appropriateness of any particular position being included in the unit. And they make their decision at that, at that point. But the bottom line is, with this type of a petition, and given the fact that there are only four, it's not going to be too difficult to determine whether there's a majority interest. And if there is, again, figuring that one issue will be resolved one way or the other. Let's say it ends up with three, then they'll certify them as a unit and we will be obligated to bargain with them for collective bargaining agreement for those three or four positions. That's what will likely happen, out a little bit into the future. I have a couple of other petitions like this that I'm dealing with right now in other places. And I can tell you that at least as of, you know, it was last week, they aren't open yet. So they're way behind. I have one that was filed in January and there's some issues and they still have not set a hearing on it because of the COVID thing. Then we were going to have a Zoom conference on one day, but then that was the day that they had all of the marches downtown Chicago. So they said they couldn't go to the building in order to do the Zoom conference, so they canceled the Zoom conference. So at this point, you know, when things get scheduled with the state, it's still kind of up in the air. But I know when our responses do, and I expect within a few weeks after that, we'll know what, what we have to at that point.
And the majority, they need, they need three of the four to vote yes, correct?
Yes. That would be correct. Now, if they have 30%, then what they do is they conduct an election. And then they actually have to come out and have a vote. This majority interest petition stuff started a number of years ago now. I want to say just the other day, but my guess is, knowing my thinking on time these days, it was probably, you know, five, 10 years ago. And the labor boards, both the Ed Board and the General Labor Board, did this because they didn't want to conduct elections anymore. They need more staff and it costs more money to do elections. So they put in a provision that if the union can get 50% or more of the proposed unit signed up to approve, they would do it by this type of a petition and therefore not have to have an election. Of course, you can probably guess my feeling on that, there would be a lot of the elections there. So be it, I think sometimes, not so much with a unit of one or four, but when you have bigger units, people can quite often get cards signed, you know, and go around and there's, you know, peer pressure. And a lot of people that sign cards may really not want to vote that way. So an election is usually a better, happy, better way to go. But we don't have any more, so the majority interest petition is there and we've got the signatures.
All right, well, you'll keep us up to date on that. Next is, we've got a couple of resolutions. First, a resolution support the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 and to implement the Fair Housing Program. This comes about from our grant that we had to make. We have to have this in place to be able to receive this grant, is that right, Amy?
It's part of the application process and it does help in the application. Give us more points, be a more complete application. There are provisions in the application for minority benefit affirmative housing statement. And part of it is, you know, the applicant agrees to affirmatively further fair housing by posting fair housing posters and by making HUD fair housing complaint forms available to the public. And then it asks if we have already, if we have a fair housing resolution applied. And then we put in the application that we would be approving it by tonight, so when we approve, we'll send it on.
Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 20-R03.
Motion.
For a second.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Parker.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden? Yes.
All right, next is the resolution that Troy talked about in his report for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, the West Street resurfacing project. So any questions on that at all? If not, I'll entertain a motion for that resolution, that'll be 20-R04.
Motion.
For a second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right. Item F is the MFT Engineering Agreement for Phase 1 and 2 Design for West Street Repaving Project with Robinson Engineering. Do you want to, is that what this?
That's our, that's our service agreement for the use of the motor fuel tax funds. We have to enter into an agreement with, with IDOT for the utilization of those funds. And then Donna put in the, in the packet, that breakdown spreadsheet that Troy's put together for you. So you can kind of see the breakdown of the R portion, Peatone's portion, and the MFT portion, and the total project portion. Just to, so you recall the total project cost. And then we'll enter into this agreement with IDOT, which is a standard agreement that is going through, it's like a contract with them.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Ham.
Jones?
Yep.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
One item I have that I neglected to get on the agenda, the people that are, that put on the cash bash that's normally held at the Legion, they postponed it a couple times, and now they've got a date in August that they want us to approve. So we'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting, because we've got some time. But they want to do, close the street off and, you know, put tables, you know, six feet apart outside so that they can have, you know, more than just a few people inside.
You can do it downtown?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll, that'll be on the agenda next time. There are no press here, it's all questions. So next, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to review the executive minutes for possible release and to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. I'll motion that. For a second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
All right, and there will be no further action other than some possible, possible release of executive session minutes.